Ones that I like are like Beta, STEM, Diamonds in the Earth, and also basketball. The teachers are also excellent. They will make learning fun. And our school building is big and it's really decorated, really nice. Hope you choose Dexter for your child's school.
Hi, I'm Ms. Gartner, and I currently teach five and six-year-old kindergarteners here at Dexter Elementary. I've been an educator for a long time, and I can honestly say that Dexter is an exceptional school. Our strong, dedicated, and caring staff is focused on building a culture of excellence every day, the Dexter way. We strive to provide personal attention with high academic standards. Our approach to instruction is data-driven, focusing on giving your student what they need to progress to their level. We don't do average at Dexter. We promote responsibility and integrity through citizenship and academics. Our students come from different racial, ethnic, and cultural socio-economic backgrounds, which fosters and contributes to our diverse educational environment. Dexter Elementary, home of the Patriots. Come soar with us.
Good morning. My name is Anthony Carbone. I'm a cultural skills teacher at Dexter Elementary. Why should you bring your children to our school? I will tell you why. Because at Dexter, we care. We take care of the students. We take care of their needs. We make sure that they are learning and we make sure that their academic goals are met at Dexter. Dexter has high-quality administrators and teachers that collaborate together, work together, to ensure that your child is going to get a quality education that they deserve. So when you're looking for a school, go back Dexter, Dexter Elementary, because we are here for your child.
When you choose Dexter Elementary, you'll be able to participate in various clubs and activities that includes choir, basketball, step team, Girls Ink, Girls in Pearls, Chess Club, Cheerleading, Drum Line, Gardening Club, Beta Club, Dumb Club, Flag Majorate, and Boys.
Dexter Elementary is the best school in Shelby County. Our motto is "Building a Culture of Excellence," promotes and builds social, emotional, and physical programs, activities which enhance students' academic abilities. Our focus is to provide students with the building blocks they need to become confident, creative, and self-motivated lifelong learners.
A.
X-A, please.
B.
Be responsible and respectful.
C.
Care for yourself other than the environment.
And D.
Do your best there all the time.
Thank you very much. Let's make today a marvelous Monday.
You have some kids that are ready to come back, full of energy. Then you have some that wish they had a few more hours to sleep in, but this morning, just the energy that our staff had, it really changed the mindset of the students where they were very excited to enter our building.
Today, we'll be performing a program with a compilation of music representative of the years 1890s up until 1980s. You will see the students wearing clothing reflective of different time periods. So you see children performing spirituals, blues, rock and roll, R&B.
We've been working for this program for two months, and we've actually worked really hard. I just support the program. It has given me opportunity to express how I feel about being African-American and being appreciative for those who have sacrificed for us to be here.
My name is Janet Jackson. My full name is Janet Delita Joey Jackson. I was born May 16th, 1956.
Looked at whether schools serve healthier meals and snacks, get students moving more, offer high-quality health and physical education courses, and empower school leaders to become healthy role models. One winning school says the honor took a lot of hard work.
It's been a lot of hard work. We've been putting in the time. We've been doing a lot of different activities throughout the school.
It builds the morale. It continues to change the narrative of our community, of our students, and it makes us feel proud for what we do each and every day here at Dexter Elementary School.
To our potential families, we encourage you, when the time is right, to visit our beautiful school and see that we are a school committed to children with a college and career focus. Here at Dexter Elementary School, you will find that this is a vibrant and engaging community of teachers and learners. I encourage you to visit our social media platforms in order to see all of the great things that are happening at Dexter Elementary Schools. We look forward to partnering with you on behalf of the future leaders as we continue together to build a culture of excellence every day, the Dexter way. Choose Dexter Elementary.
Great evening, great evening to our Dexter family. It is good to see you all. The time now is 5:30. I'd like to welcome you to our Dexter Elementary School Reentry Town Hall. I am Principal Serson, again, the principal of Dexter Elementary School, and we want to take this time out just to tell you thank you for everything that you have done thus far today. It's the 101st, the 101st day of the school year, and you all have entrusted your scholars to us each and every day. And our teachers, let me tell you, they have worked extremely hard. I am very proud of our staff for learning the Microsoft Teams and for putting in the work, the hard work, each and every day. They are up planning throughout the day to ensure that teaching and learning continues throughout each and every day. So again, to my staff that's on, thank you for joining us. To all of our parents, thank you for joining us. And to our scholars, I know some of our scholars are listening as well. So we're going to go ahead and get started because we do know in the middle of difficulty lies opportunity. So we hope that you enjoy that choose video, our promotional video for this year, and that you are connected on all of our social media platforms and sharing it with your families and friends as well as we continue to expand Dexter Elementary School. So we're going to go ahead and get started with our meeting for today. And we know here at Dexter Elementary School, I think I may have to, okay, I think we are good now, still on? Okay, and we know that we're building a culture of excellence every day, the Dexter way. And we know here at Dexter, I hope you feel this way, to our parents, that every student is invested. Every staff member has a positive impact. Every family is engaged, and every community member is connected. I can speak of that. We have been more connected with you this year than we have since my three years of being principal here at Dexter Elementary School. So again, the pandemic has brought out some togetherness and closeness, and I hope you have seen, hey, the hard work, hard work really, that our teachers put in each and every day as you've been educated and supporting us and monitoring your child's learning at your homes. So we know that we empower our learners, we develop our leaders, and we celebrate our diversity. And here's our agenda for today. I brought you greetings, but we actually have greetings from the office of our superintendent, and that's coming from actually not our, not Dr. Tankson, who is our instructional leadership director. She's been here at one of our meetings, I believe, that we had back in August. And then also, you've probably seen her in one of the morning announcements. But we do have one of our instructional support advisors, Ms. McNulty, who will bring greetings from the superintendent's office. And then my admin team will bring you greetings, our assistant principal, Ms. Hicks, our instructional facilitator, Ms. Billensley. And then I will go into our return stronger with policies and procedures as we move forward in this work. So at this time, we'll get greetings, have greetings at this time from Ms. McNulty, who is representing the office of the superintendent. She may jump on. I hope she texts me, admin team texts me if Ms. McNulty jumps on. Several of our zones, they are having their meeting as well to where they're tied up going to all zones to their meeting. So when she comes in, everyone, we'll get our official greetings from the superintendent's office. But at this time, Assistant Principal Hicks and then our instructional coach, Ms. Billensley, will bring greetings. And I see a typo that I put in there too, so parents, please forgive us with the typos. We'll make sure that, just forgive us. AP Hicks.
Thank you, Principal Serson. Thank you. I am Latrinda Hicks. I'm your assistant principal. And I just want to echo Principal Serson and just welcome you all as is on the screen and there's welcome. And I want to thank you all and bring you greetings from our admin team and just want to thank you for entrusting your students to us. And just I want to thank you all actually for logging in tonight and just welcome you to a productive meeting this afternoon. Just going to thank you and bring you greetings. Thank you so much, and let me know if there's any way that I can be of assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks and Principal Serson, and good evening Dexter family. I just want to take a moment just to welcome you and tell you how much we appreciate you joining us this evening. You are in for a meeting with a lot of valuable information, and hopefully, everything shared will answer many of the questions that you may have. I just want to say that our Dexter family is in this together. We are Team Dexter. We'll continue to persevere, and we will always do what's right for our children at Dexter. So again, we thank you for joining us. If you need us, please don't hesitate to call. And now I will turn it back to you, Principal Serson.
Thank you so much, team, and really, they have worked behind the scenes, on the screen, you know, every day since we went into this pandemic. So again, I am very fortunate to have two strong leaders on the team to support teaching and learning here at Dexter Elementary School. I do see members of our leadership team on as well. So again, I know towards the end, I will shout them out. I know our content, some of our content leads are on, our ELA content lead, Ms. Daniels, our math content lead, Ms. Thomas is on. I believe we may have some more content leads that's on as well, and I definitely will shout them out as we go. So again, everybody, let's go ahead and get started, and you know how I am, you know, I shoot straight. But you know, and I thank you to those who submitted questions as well. Hopefully, those questions will be answered as you make the best choice for your child for in-person learning that may, that's going to take place March the first. So again, we're returning, returning stronger, our safe plan for the 2020 and 21 school reentry year. So again, this purpose tonight is to provide an overview of student reentry protocol and expectations for our March 1st reentry for our elementary students. I know that families that's on, you may be tied in, husband may be on one call, you may be on another one. But please know that middle and high school will begin March 8th with in-person, and this is for the families that selected in-person return. So again, as you know, as we've been communicating, we will be going back to our three-tiered bell times for in-person and virtual once we begin on March the first. So as you know, our school bell time, and I know when I tell this to our teachers and to me as well, our time is 9:15 to 4:15. We've had a great 101 school days, enjoying that 8 to 3, but we do go back to our 9:15 to 4:15 schedule for students in kindergarten through fifth. Let me be more specific. Our Department of Exceptional Children, which is our special education pre-K class, kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade begins at 9:15 to 4:15. And our traditional pre-K classes, we operate from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. beginning March 1st. So we know that the Corona pandemic has changed how we see the world, right? However, we know that we have to continue to keep our students safe. We have to teach them and provide social and emotional support through this incredible time. It goes without saying that I know you know as well that our team has been there to support you every mile of the way. So we have decided to re-enter our building and serve our students who have opted for in-person learning while continuing virtual instruction. So I'll tell you a little bit about that as well because I don't want to leave you blindsided. I want you to know off the top, and I'm going to say this even before I get to that slide. The only thing that's changing with the March 1st reentry is the adult who is supervising or monitoring the child. Everything will continue on Microsoft Teams, whether they are here in the building or if your child continues at home or at a childcare facility. So again, our district is committed to providing the best learning experiences for our students, and as we look forward to implementing the plan for the rapidly approaching phase return to in-person classrooms in March, we must garner our resources and efforts to continue providing high-quality learning options to our students. So again, this reentry plan will begin with students who choose, who are choosing the in-person learning option. So again, you may say, you know what, Principal Serson, I have not, I am satisfied with the choice that I made back in the summer. I made this one back in July, and I chose for my child to be virtual, and I want to stay with that decision. So if you say, Mr. Serson, Principal Serson, are you giving us a deadline to make this decision? If you have not changed your initial change, if you're virtual and you see that, hey, in about three or four weeks, we see that the cases are going down, I'm talking to some other parents, and they're like, oh, okay, it's okay. I'm going to send my child back April, end of April, May, you still have that choice. Now, if you say on the other end, your child, you've opted for them to come in the building, and you say, ooh, I don't, I don't like, I don't like what principal said, even though he said it tonight, and I'm aware that students are not going to move about the building as much, that they're going to be in their classroom the majority of the time. I think they came on March 1st, 2nd, I think on March 3rd or next week, baby, they going back to virtual. You have that option, you know, as well. However, you do not have the option of picking and choosing, saying that, hey, my child is going to come Tuesday and Thursday in person, and Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, they going to come virtual. That's not going to work. It has to be one way or the other. So again, what to expect when schools reopen? Safety protocols, safety protocols, the utilization of student devices, social distancing when possible, high-quality instruction will continue, and social emotional support. So again, that social emotional support is key, and I want to commend and shout out our professional school counselors, our 3 through 5 counselor, Ms. Johnson, and our K through 2 counselor, Ms. Sherman, who is going above and beyond to ensure that our students are being reached, our parents are still being reached even in these times. So again, as we go into the schools, you have seen this slide, enhanced health and safety protocols. We have increased cleaning. I can say that, I can say that we have definitely been in the building. You have had about 30 staff members every day since the pandemic that have worked in the building every day. So we know that this is true here at Dexter Elementary School. All common areas will be thoroughly cleaned and disinfected at least twice per day. Thorough cleaning and disinfection of all frequently touched areas at least four times per day. And then the daily restock of tissues, paper towels, hand soap, hand sanitizer, dispensers. When it comes to that, I think the staff members will tell you, I don't play when it comes to these type things. I will call, I will go to the higher-ups and say, hey, not at Dexter. It won't happen here. So again, know that the safeguards to limit the spread of germs, the temperature and health monitoring for all students, staff, and visitors. Those with fever or symptoms will not be allowed to remain at school. No exceptions. Isolation areas called our safe rooms are designated for individuals with symptoms, social distancing markings in all of our buildings and our schools, reduce class transitions, reduce visitor volume. Yeah, no visitors in the building, limiting class interactions and gatherings, hand sanitizing stations. And we've gone above and beyond what the district has given us, and with the staff that's been in the building, we've added additional sanitized stations through our hallways. But frequent opportunities for hand washing when it's safe, right, to wash our hands when that ban has been lifted. But again, the use of personal protective equipment will be key. It's mandatory for students and staff members to wear masks throughout the day. So again, health and safety signage is in all of our buildings. We have nice floor decals. We have visitor entry guidelines, mask requirements, hand washing steps, steps to avoid germs, and stay at home. We advise you to stay home, you know, when sick. So again, as it relates to pre-cleaning, and some of this I will jump, I will spend time on then, I will, you know, go quickly through because if you've been part of our town hall that we had back in August, we talked about this. And then also, if you've been visiting our other social media, digital, virtual meetings with the district, you've seen these. So with pre-K, pre-K clean and sanitize, and early childhood staff will continue to clean, sanitize, and disinfect surfaces and objects frequently touched, especially toys and games. Toys that cannot be cleaned and sanitized will be removed and are in the process of being removed. Teachers will remove all of the machine washable cloth toys. Students will not share toys and with other children unless they have been washed and sanitized. All contaminated toys will be set aside until they have been cleaned. Sanitizing buckets will be provided, and the cleaning process for classroom toys will include using a cleaning sanitizing solution with an EPA-registered disinfectant. Sort of if you have younger kids that's in, you know, childcare facilities or how the Y is handling that at this time, those same protocols will be here in our classrooms, and our teachers, our staff, and our paraprofessionals will be a part of this process to ensure sanitizing areas. This is Dexter Elementary School. Y'all, if y'all haven't been here, you know, in a while, things are continuing, changing. What you see in the office, the picture to your left, you see that we have Plexi over, over the desk to where when you interact with our front office team, it's Plexi that's put around them to keep them safe. To the right throughout the building, you see a stay home when sick. You see all of this information that's posted throughout the building. So no matter where you walk, you can be on one hall, you see these four signs. You turn the next hall, you're going to see the same four signs. You go into the restroom, you're going to see the same four signs. You know, you at a stall, you're going to see the sign, you know. So we have that because we want it to become ingrained in all of our students' minds and our staff members as well. Also in the front office, even for when you come in to visit the office, we have you do a temperature check. We have you to disinfect your hands even before you come into the office, then when you come into the office. So some of the parents that have been here, you know this process. Yes, it takes a while to get everyone in, but hey, we'll rather be safe than sorry, right? So again, these are the floor decals that you see throughout, you know, our building, our shiny floors. So again, that's what you see throughout the building. Over 500 decals are scattered throughout our building. To the picture to the right is just a sample of what will happen when the students walk into the building. What you see is we only have three entrances for our students, the car rider side, we have the bus rider side, and the front of the school side. So when students come into the building, they will be checked, the temperature gauge, we have a temperature gun. We also have electronic forehead readers to where all they do is put their forehead into the machine. Hold on, let me look under my desk. I have one right here. Purchase them at, you know, and if you've been at the school, you've seen these. So every location will have these students. When they come in, they must have their mask. They will do hand sanitize right there with our staff, with our staff that's been trained for every location that comes in. Please note that visitors will not be allowed to walk your babies to class. You will not get past the doors. Those, if you're coming to the front office, you won't pass the front office. If you try to sneak in through these sections, the staff will turn you around because we have to keep the building secure. We have to keep the building safe. So again, I go ahead and I know our Dexter families. I know that you'll understand that, and I thank you for your understanding in advance on that. So again, what you see throughout the building and outside, to the right, is signage that we have throughout our building. And then to the left, you see the temperature, the thermometer, the forehead reader. Then you also see the foam dispensers, disinfecting sanitized dispensers that's in the common areas of the main areas of the building. Each classroom will have, you know, a bucket of hand sanitizer, alcohol wipes. Students, I know that you all have purchased, I know like my daughter, she has her cloth mask to match all of her outfits and all of that good stuff. But if your children misplace or they don't come with them, we do have disposable children masks for them as well. So again, that is a non-negotiable, that they have to wear that all day until they, you know, of course, if they are eating or if they are, you know, trying to sip, you know, some water, you know, with the bottled water that they're bringing to the school. Because I just want you all to know this, that even when the ban is lifted, we do not use our water fountains throughout the school. Students will get an opportunity to get two bottled waters, but they're the small bottled waters with their lunch, for breakfast and for lunch. But again, we are encouraging you to supply your child with, you know, like a bottled water if they have to drink bottled water throughout the day. So as of right now, school personnel, we currently have 60 teachers returning, and then 24 educational assistants. And then we still have an additional, about 15 to 20 additional staff. And then we still have an additional, about fifteen to twenty um additional staff members that will be on hand receiving um students once we um return. So again, um, that's our school personnel. And then as of right now, the last numbers, and please continue to update us, update your teachers. We have three hundred and forty-three students um that will be returning in person for in-person learning. Um, five hundred and forty-one of our scholars will remain virtual. So again, we are a large um elementary school, I think you um know that. Um, however, uh speaking with some of my colleagues and some other schools, um, they only have, you know, like fifty students returning or less. So again, um, we are ready to receive uh the students. But I want you all to know that all students will maintain their teacher of record, whether in person or virtual. Special note, if our um, if we are over fourteen, I will connect with my boss. But I want you to know that if teacher returns to building, students will be placed with their teacher, but it's not guaranteed. So again, I know you're probably like, that's cross messaging right there. We want fourteen, it's the max in the classrooms. If we get to a point, that's fourteen that they're doing across the district. However, in our building, our classrooms are a little bit larger than some of our um other Shelby County uh schools. So again, um, when I get special permission, like if it's fifteen, you know, we'll be able to really social socially distance fifteen students in that room. However, if I already know that a classroom has twenty-five students that's returning, it's not guaranteed that that twenty-five will be in with um the child's teacher. But as of now, as, as I'm talking to you now, all students will be um with, still with their child, even if we have to cross. Um, even if we have to, if you're on a departmentalized team, even if we may have to shift um and pull two kids from your morning class and put them with the afternoon class and vice versa, they'll still have the same teacher. But as of right now, we're good. So um, parent K, uh, pre-K parent drop off and pickup. So due to health checks and questionnaire, students must be dropped off and picked up by adults. Teachers will establish a specific drop off and pickup location for pre-K students approved uh by me. So again, that drop off and teachers will reach out to you. Um, pre-K will probably um have little meetings or put a questionnaire together on Friday by um by telling them that we're gonna change that process usually and we usually do pre-K in the front. But we're actually gonna move that to our back parking lot, to our back car line. And we're gonna do the drop off and this, the arrival and dismissal from um our standard car line um that will take place at eight o'clock. So again, students will have staggered arrival and dismissal times for families. Um, so again, it may be in those every ten minutes. So your pre-K teacher, Ms. Fortner, Ms. Cody, Ms. Peterson, will be reaching out to those uh pre-K parents that have um signed up for your students to come um back, return in person. So again, we know, again, social distance markers will be outside, it's white strips that's outside for parents waiting to drop off and or pick up students. So parents will not be allowed again to enter the building. Teachers for pre-K will scan students in and out using our Raptor uh system. Um, it will be added to laptops and devices, cause you know, in the past, um, parents, pre-K parents, um, our, our staff has gone out to the car and handed you a form, had you to sign it, and you gave it back to them. So we're not trying to spread germs. It's gonna be on iPads that they're signing you in to get you, to get your children in. So again, um, parents and students should wear masks upon arrival and dismissal. Teachers will have pre-populated forms with health questions and parent signatures for signing each day. So again, our pre-K team must perform temperature health check of students before parents leave the premises. The teacher or assistant will check all students' arrival and verify their completion of the pre-populated health questionnaire. And then as the students come in, they will wash and sanitize their hands before entering the classroom. And we know that policy is uh tied with state policy and law. Pre-K operates a little bit different than um our traditional uh classrooms. So again, parents uh will drop off students in the back of the school in our normal car line. Parents and students will remain in the car until a school representative begins the arrival process. If students arrive after eight fifteen AM, the parent must report to the front of the building and check in the student um in the main office. So if, so if we have closed the car line and um they're not out there at the blue hall at eight fifteen, you must drive around to the front of the school for that um to, and walk your child in. And they'll still go in signing in, doing everything uh from the front. So again, parents should arrive at three o'clock in the afternoon or before and park in the car line area. School representatives will begin escorting students to cars at three PM. All students um should be picked up by three fifteen, pre-K, um, by three fifteen. Again, I want to note this as much as I can. If you didn't get anything else from this in order to ensure safety and the cleaning process to continue with the cleaning at night. We have failure to pick your child up by three fifteen will result in a call to SES security and a report to the state of Tennessee Child Protective Services. So again, if students are attending Y Care, a school representative will check the child in with the Y Care uh staff. Bus riders, car riders, walkers, bike riders, daycare riders and students who um drive cars. Well, none of our babies gonna drive cars. That's for high school, but this is um for us. We know that parents will check students' temperature before leaving. Y'all, please, can I be real? I'm, I'm a parent too now, okay? Check y'all baby's temperature before you all um get here. Now, if your baby, i- if, if it's, if, if you at home and it's about one hundred, stay at home. Your baby's temperature is not gonna go home from that drive from the house to the school. Please think about the safety of the other students and the staff members. Again, parents will not be permitted to walk their students to class. I know you wanna walk them to class and all of that. Gone are those days at this time. Parents must become familiar with our drop off times and locations. Students that ride, uh, students, riders and walkers will enter buildings at entrances um specified by school personnel. So again, bus riders will still enter. Um, then they know, you may not know what a bus um lane is, but that's coming off of Charles Bryant's side. They'll get off the bus, they'll come in through that entrance, they'll get checked and everything there. Uh, and then on the opposite side, where our gym and everything is, that's the um car rider side. Uh, but our walkers will come in, you know, from our um, from our front office side because they're coming from the neighborhood and then they're walking in through the front of our building. And we'll have the sanitized stations and everything right there as well. So again, some of these things are redundant. Um, students will require, are required to wear masks at the bus stop and before entering the building. Students must stand six feet apart at the bus stop and while waiting to enter the building according to the school procedure. So there are areas, once they get to the school, to where it'll show where they stand. Students will stand on the white, um, on the white strips before they come into uh the building. Students will sit and assign seats on the bus. Siblings will be allowed to sit together. So it will, I ask that you practice some patience. Uh, once we start, we know that this will be like the first, it is, it'll be like the first week of school. You know, we'll have to work out some kinks, but together we'll get through it um as we move, you know, forward. So again, students will unload and enter the building according to the stu- school's procedures upon arrival. Again, all students will undergo temperature checks after school. So parents, just so you'll know, our staff, they undergo temperature checks and those questions as well, health questions as they come in. So if students are found to have an elevated reading after two checks, they'll be escorted to our um, our isolation room and parents will be contacted, pick up the child. I know at Dexter, we don't have these type of parents that will pick up the phone when we call and say that, hey, your baby's sick. And y'all know that sometimes, like I just, the example I just said, you know, your baby had a temperature of fever before y'all left the house, but y'all was gonna bring him to school and you tried to drive off real fast. Come on, please don't do that. If they're sick, they're better at home, better at home, okay? So again, students will be dismissed according to our school um procedures. And buses, they tell us that buses will be clean and disinfected between morning and afternoon pickup, between routes and at the end of each school day. So again, this is our bus transportation and just so you'll know, this is all on our SES website and this, this session will be recorded and placed on our digital platform. So again, on the bus, again, practice social distancing and wearing their masks. Schools will return to their original bell schedule. School bus routes will remain the same. Again, buses will be clean and disinfected between the routes at the end of the day. So this just tells more about Durham, um, employees, they're screened, um, just like our employees are screened. They have to wear masks, uh, disposable or clean or reusable masks. Buses will be cleaned. Uh, hand sanitizer will be available on all buses uh for student and driver usage. Bu- uh, bus drivers will provide it with an additional mask for distribution to students as needed. Um, so drivers will disinfect those high-touch surface areas throughout the day. And I believe it's those bars as the students, you know, step up, you know, on the bus, you know, as well. So drivers will use gloves when touching surfaces and then a use of natural ventilation, meaning those windows will be open to increase outdoor air um quality as well um as they're going on the bus. So again, uh, those drivers will, are required to wear face shields in addition to a disposable face covering. Again, temperature checks when implementing seating charts for bus drivers to identify bus riders and help with contact tracing. So even um in the building, students will, um, it would be a requirement of our teachers for students to have seating charts as well. So again, um, bus passes will be emailed. They're, they have already been emailed to us and handbooks. So again, on Friday of this week, before Friday, teachers, uh, staff members will be calling um to give you your bus numbers. Um, uh, the first day of school, we know that the kids that's riding buses, they will not have their passes, the car stock passes and everything. But we're gonna make sure that they get those on Monday, just like with car rider um numbers. We're gonna make sure on, by Friday, you should get a call by your child's teacher, if they are a car rider, uh, to get the car rider number. Um, so the kid will know on Monday, hey, you're um, you're first grade, your number is one twenty-eight. You know, so they are knowing their mind, listen for one twenty-eight when they do dismissal. But we know how it is the first week of school. Um, our um, our staff will be out there in the car rider line with their uh PPE on and we ask that you have your PPE on too, if possible. But um, don't be offended if they stepping back, um, trying to get your number uh or your name uh for your child on that, on that first week until they get acclimated to the number and to the car. So um, again, um, help us out as you can. And on that first day of school, those car riders will get their official tag, um, will be in their backpacks. So you can put that in your um window, um, window mirror so that our staff, it'll be easily readable, so we can get that out to you. So um, they have a video, uh, can I skip the video? Y'all wanna see the video? Have y'all seen this re-entry video? Y'all have probably seen this re-entry video before. It's fifty seconds.
Principal Serson, we can't hear it.
Thanks so much. These three uh device.
Why would you bring a water here? Go find yourself.
Okay, uh, parents, in the sake of time, I'm gonna send that out to you. How about that? I'll send that video and I'll show you where it is and we'll put that on our um thing. It's a fifty-second um video that really just talks about what I just talked about, okay? So um, again, thank you for that sound. I thought these, the apples, uh, the macks work, but it's, it's, it's not, so excuse me for that. So again, as we continue um recess, so every effort will be made for students to have recess with their class cohort while engaging in some degree of physical distancing. Stu- school administrators should plan to stagger recess time. Students will sanitize their hands before and after recess. Student recess will be held in the classroom. So I'm telling you, students will see outside twice. They'll see outside when they come to school, when they arrive, and they will see outside when they dismiss. Recession will still at this time be held in the classroom um via video or, you know, that time if you're still staying virtual. Um, uh, they'll have that time to do recess, you know, at home. But playground equipment is um inaccessible uh right now. I know we've had, um, I'm here every day. I see people out there playing and all of that stuff and I'm like, I can't stop them. I can't put a lock on it and stuff like that, but I hope they, you know, they sanitized. But um, our kids, it will still be how it's being operated, you know, now. So again, the end of class hallway transitions at the close of the school day, teachers and students will disinfect classroom, uh, supplies and materials, uh, keyboards, desktops, calculators. Um, if we're using um those, um, I would determine, uh, uh, I've already determined, y'all will see this on the next one. Um, students will not be allowed to use the cubbies. Um, you know, because of germs and all of those type things, they will be using the back of their, you know, chairs for their coats, their backpacks and everything. So class dismissals and end of the day dismissals will be scheduled on a staggered basis and will include the six feet social distancing protocol. So again, um, we going, we're releasing the restroom breaks, the lunch breaks, recess co-curricular activities will be scheduled on staggered basis and aligned to our most current CDC and Shelby County Health Department uh guidelines. So um, you will be receiving the new schedule, you know, of your um children. I know that some of your teachers have already posted um their schedules about how it will look come uh Monday, March first for everybody. So again, um, just stay tuned. Um, our teachers are still working, you know, remotely because the building is closed, you know, and everything, and they're trying to update, trying to get that easily accessible to you. And you should know that by Friday, um, all of those times. So again, pre-K meals, um, pre-K meals um will be, all meals for pre-K will be in the classroom. So they will continue to clean and sanitize and disinfect surfaces for mealtime. Students will eat all meals in the classroom. Eater ti- uh, eating times will be staggered with groups A and B, allowing only two students per table. That's within their classrooms or, you know, if we were using the cafeteria, utilizing all tables within the classroom. While eating, students will place their mask and label storage bins to limit um exposure. So again, your pre-K teachers will be telling you more about that as we get information um concerning how it will actually look in the pre-K um classrooms. You know that each classroom will have your teacher and your paraprofessional to ensure that we are still following the, those CDC um guidelines um as, as well. So school meals, so breakfast and lunch will be served daily. We will keep that going um daily uh from the school. Um, students can still bring their lunch. If you want them to bring their lunch, that is fine. So again, expect a combination of grab and go meals, shorter periods or lunch consumed in the classroom. So breakfast will be served in the classroom. Yes, we're going back to breakfast in the classroom, which I do not like. However, we are going to be flexible, but it will be served from nine AM to nine twenty. Um, it will be a quick uh bite that they are able to eat and discard um between that nine and, nine o'clock and nine twenty time. Lunch will be in the cafeteria for kindergarten and first grade as of now. Um, we are able to safely uh put about eighty students in the cafeteria socially distanced at the tables um facing one way and stretched out um in the um, in the cafeteria. I can't say right now, uh, it's no secret, the largest number um of students that's coming in person. I don't know if some of you are on the fence, the largest number of students that's coming back per grade level is our kindergarten students. So um, again, that's the reason for us moving to um the cafeteria. But in the classroom will be, lunch will be served for pre-K, second, third, fourth and fifth grade. So um, when feasible, there will be normal operations. When social distancing, we are still offering those meals to be picked up on Thursday and Friday. So virtual parents will still be able to pick up your meals as you see on those designated um days as you need. So again, what I'm encouraging our teachers, it will be several asynchronous, you know, brain break opportunities and those, you will see more of those come March first. And that's really to help with the transition of staff within the building to where it seems like it's seamless for our virtual and in-person um students with some of those brain breaks or learning breaks during those asynchronous um times. So again, um, parents will not be allowed to enter the building. Parents must become familiar with our pickup times. Students will depart the school building as exit specified by school personnel. Um, again, students will be required to wear a mask as they exit the building to their awaiting cars um and walk, as you're walking home as well. Parents will not be allowed to exit their cars or gathering groups while waiting for students to dismiss. Um, you all don't do that anyway, but bus riders will be dismissed based on our school's protocol. And you know, here at Dexter, we try to start. And you know, here at Dexter, we try to start our dismissal process early, you know, when we um get everybody. But please note that buses, um walkers will be dismissed at four fifteen. Um four fifteen, because I know at four fifteen, that's the exit time for us. We start our car rider line at about three fifty uh to get um students out. You know, we know that they are safely with you if we exit um prior to four fifteen. But our buses will not leave the premises to about four ten, four ten, to ensure that they make it to their areas on um time. So although the buses may be here at um at ten minutes to four o'clock, we do not board the buses. We are not gonna call for the students to come down um until um we start our dismissal uh procedure. So just so you'll know, um uh we will utilize our intercom system for school-wide dismissal, meaning that car riders, um car tag numbers will be issued and assigned to students. Parents will receive a call on Friday concerning their child's assigned car number. Students will be called to our staging area beginning at three forty-five PM as their name is called and then will be escorted to the car line area. Our car line will begin daily from three fifteen until four fifteen. And again, I put that disclaimer out there, all students must be picked up no later than four fifteen, and you see that failure to do so. So again, bus and daycare riders, when buses arrive on campus, the bus number will be called uh via the intercom system. Students will be called to our bus staging areas, rosters checked, and then the students will be escorted um onto the bus. So let me tell you about these staging areas. In the past, um we know that we've used our gym to house all of our car riders and they exit out the gym to the outside staging area. That will change. Uh we will call a few numbers um at a time um throughout the building. People will be stationed throughout the halls to ensure that students, once their names are called, because they'll still be with their hallroom teacher, once their numbers called, one twenty-six, one twenty-six, that's first grade. They'll be coming from the yellow hallway, walking down the yellow hallway to the gym um area and then going out, then going outside, because hopefully about time that they make it outside to their socially-distanced staging area. You, the car line will go around and they'll be able to get in the car and you will keep it moving. Um we are actually going to try to put another waiting area um out there. The the first two or three spots uh will not be utilized by staff. If we need for you to move over, we're gonna ask that you move over to wait for your child um and and everything and moving forward. Um so again, even with the bus and daycares, as bus, as buses come, um it will be an intercom um uh announcement saying NG zero three five. Students that ride NG zero three five, please report to the staging area. The staging area will be on a hallway to where we won't do but one to two buses at a time. Socially-distanced staff will check off um the students, uh make sure that they are there for their buses, and then they will be escorted um to the bus, and then the buses will take off from there. Usually in the past, they've lined up on the green hallway and in the cafeteria. We won't be doing that anymore. So again, the last um people that will be dismissed will be our walkers and bike riders. Students will be dismissed um to our two walker um staging areas, that's Behringer um and Charles Bryant. Our rosters will be checked, and then the students will be escorted uh to their designated areas, the same areas that we normally um walk them to. Uh but please make sure that you are there to receive your scholar. If you are not there, our staff will escort them back to the school, and then we'll go back to this. All students must be picked up no later. And you all, what is key in all of this? Communication, communication. Uh if you are late, we know that accidents happen, but please contact the school. And the school is trying to contact you, you know, just be kind to our team. You know, you know that you late, you know, don't, don't, don't uh not answer the four one six zero three five five number. I know it's easy like, oh, they calling, yeah, they calling, cuz I've asked them to call after four fifteen. They're doing uh directive that I've asked, you know, and sometimes failure to pick up. It gets the ball rolling, cuz if we don't hear from you, we follow the chain of command, S C S security. S C S security gonna call the police, and then after they call the police, we report it to the state. So it will behoove you to answer those calls or to call us so that we are aware that something is happening, you know, in the area, you know, trying to get to school. But do not say that, hey, I'm gonna wait till the possible last minute, cuz that car rider line is long. It's not long this year, cuz all students not returning, okay? So um as we continue, Y Care programs will resume and follow the CDC and S C H D guidelines. Teacher and students will sanitize their hands prior to entering and leaving uh the classroom and practice social distancing when feasible. Small groups um will be two to three students when they are working together, doing those activities that they have still been doing in tho- in their area. So again, Y Care will operate in our cafeteria and gym and follow the same procedures as last year. You will still have to get out your car, push that button to come in, to sign out your child and everything that same way according to um the Y. So again, um our our Y Care staff will be available to assist you, and that number will max at fifty. So again, that information went out today. Please make sure that you go ahead and try to sign up your child. Once they hit that fifty, you know, max, we will not allow any more students to uh be a part of the Y Care um program here at Dexter. So be mindful um of that. We know our bell times, we talked about our bell times. And you do know that here at Dexter, we do not have a uniform policy um at this time. We expect that our students come dressed appropriately if they're coming in person, the same thing that we ask virtually. We don't want them to be in their uh pajamas, you know, and all of that um as well. You know, come with 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 clothes ready to, you know, learn. Remember, if you've been here with me, um this is my third year, you know, I said I wasn't gonna fight that uh right now uh with those uh uniforms. Now, that may come later on, but as of right now, we do not have a uniform policy. Now, if you uh say that, you know what, it's just simple for me. I bought some white shirts, some red shirts, some blue shirts, and some khakis and all of that. By all means, your child can wear a uniform. We're not gonna uh say no, you know, to that. So instructional spaces, you see, this is one of our classrooms um here. Uh we took this picture just so that you could see um the dividers that's on um our classroom. So please note that because of the number of students that's coming back, um you, we do not have to technically have the divider up if we're able to socially distance accordingly. But however, we're trying to make sure that all of our rooms have the dividers up because our students will still be on the screen, y'all. So nothing has changed with that, even though the teacher is in there teaching. You know, guess how the teachers are teaching? The same way that I'm um interacting with you right now, they're still gonna be on the screen the same way because that's their hybrid. They are teaching the in-person people and the um virtual people on the screen. If um it's not like um, you know, one of our teachers, Ms. Ogden can't get up and say, you know what, I'm finna get up and let me go over here and meet with um Jonathan right here. Jonathan, let me see this problem. No, Jonathan still gotta use that raised hand feature, and she gonna talk uh with the screen to get that um done because that's ensuring equity amongst all of our um Shelby County Schools families. I know you may say, I got friends that go to Bartlett, I got friends that go to Orange, and they don't do it that way. No, they don't, but this is the way that we're doing it with Shelby County Schools. Uh so again, the max is fourteen. Um our school have been equipped, you know, with the desks and tables. So um we know that in some of our classrooms, in our kindergarten classrooms, we do have tables. Uh but we will have signage, and they will still have these um dividers on the screen to where it will uh only be two sitting on varying ends of the tables. And then we also are putting some desks in those kindergarten classrooms as well um as of, you know, you know, right now, trying to get that in for our um students. So just so you'll know, that each classroom will have their homeroom teacher or a Dexter Elementary staff member to monitor instruction. Hallways will have D D E S, that's Dexter Elementary School Staff Station, to mon- monitor any activity on the halls. Parents, you don't know this, but um one of the things that I had my admin team to do last year, and we're gonna continue um this year, is that we don't have offices in our, you know, uh we do have offices, but we take our offices out to the field. The field is in the hallways. So again, we will have staff members that will be stationed there, just because if if a student has an emergency, they gotta go to the restroom. You know, uh that they will have, they're mandated two times that the teachers will take them as a class um with the schedule that they go to the restroom. But if it's an emergency and they have to go, we will have someone, you know, in the hallways, making sure that they go and come back out still utilizing that buddy system that we do, you know, every day. So again, this is way um the classrooms look without your, you know, with, the way the classrooms look, you know, with the dividers and without. We're still in a process of putting those dividers. See, they are spaced out, you know, um in the classrooms here, you know, in our uh building. So classroom instruction, we kinda talked about this and you saw this. So again, we know that all of our students, um they learned, uh they, you know, at first, it was the twenty-second and twenty-third, Monday and Tuesday of this week. They were supposed to do asynchronous. However, with everything that happened um this week, um the weather last week, and then our teachers being vaccinated um and everything, um Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week, this whole entire week is asynchronous learning. We have been checking in, we have still been recording the morning announcements um for our students. They have been giving work, you know, and everything. This will continue the remainder of this week, and then also March first and second will be asynchronous days for pre-K through five. That is for our students um for in-person um learning to get acclimated with the procedures of the school uh to know where everything is, so they can uh bond with the teacher and everything. But then again, once they do their um work, they will have some time to where they're going over procedures where um the car line is, the bus riding line, you know, those type things. But then again, the teachers will give them their asynchronous work um later on in the day as well. Uh so again, we come back together March third, Wednesday, for a live learning um in-person and virtual um, you know, the way that we normally uh would would do. Uh so again, student devices and classroom instruction, students will bring their fully-charged S C S devices and power cords daily. So again, that's part of their backpack. They need to bring their devices every day, every day, every day. Uh even if it's the loner device or if it's, you know, their devices and their power cords. Now, you may say, Ms. Serson, you know what, those devices don't last all day. We will have power stations in the classrooms to where um once their pow- if the power starts to go down, they'll have an opportunity to uh plug up to get, you know, a charge. So again, it's important that you ensure that um your children, that they power up as they do every day. So again, students will bring their clean and disinfecting headsets daily. Um again, learning will still take place, even if they're in the building. They need to put on their nice um, you know, headphones and all of those good things. Uh yeah, with my headphones. So they'll be still, teachers will still be teaching and learning, these my kindergarten ones. They'll still have on their devices doing this, you know, as well in the classroom. So again, students with individual instructional technology needs will be assisted as needed as um we can at the school. So again, um shared school supplies and shared storage space will be discouraged to the extent possible. Students will need to bring their own school um device uh supply boxes if you can, meaning that um we're not gonna be sharing paper. Teachers are not gonna be giving out, you know, like if you're in person, here's your assignment, here's your assignment. No, we're still following the same means you, they'll still be doing Near Pod, they'll still be doing iReady. Um the students will still, they have their books, you know, in person. They may say, hey, boys and girls, at this time, I need you to turn to page twenty-six. They have their workbook, they'll be in page twenty-six. And then uh as they work in person at their care center, they'll still be working in person, but still have to turn in their assignments, you know, the same way. A good thing of that is that, parents, if you have not been here to pick up the second quarter, um the third quarter, um, you know, work, you know, we will see on the first and the second when the children get here, um verifying if they did not pick up their supplies at that time. Those workbooks, we'll ensure that they get those workbooks um and headphones um next week when they come back. So again, students will use the back of their chairs to rest backpacks and or jackets. Students will not be allowed to use cubbies and classroom lockers for those rooms that have uh lockers. As we um continue, and I do see the hand that's raised, once we get to the end, we'll uh entertain, you know, those questions. So again, virtual daily attendance process will still be followed. Teacher will call roll as they do on Microsoft Teams and record the attendance in Power School within the first fifteen minutes of every class period. And the thing will still be the same, you still have to show your s- show your screen, show your screen, you know, to be um actively engaged in the learning uh process. Uh delivery of instruction will um occur parallel to distance and in-person learning with social distancing when feasible. Again, teachers will continue to use Microsoft Teams. Quarantine and sick students will receive distant learning instructions. So if your child is sick and everything, and um if we have to quarantine, if we have an isolation, if that should happen, you know, you will be notified, you know, and everything. And learning will continue virtually, you know, for those students uh via Microsoft Teams. That's the part of Microsoft's team still, you know, happening. So again, you've seen this, the day in the life of simulation for a teacher, what teachers will go through, whole group via Teams. Uh the same thing that they're doing now, and I can tell you this, um we are very fortunate and blessed to have a team of dedicated professionals that's going above and beyond. I know I said that um before, but all of this, the whole group, the small group, the asynchronous, they are doing more than some of our other schools within the district. They have been recognized um, you know, as, you know, as well. Um and I do um uh want to shout out our um uh instructional leadership team that's on um the call. Uh now, I know that our reading laureate is here, Ms. Ogden, our social studies um champion lead, Ms. Townsend, second grade teacher is on our, again, our E L A, Ms. Daniels, uh math, Ms. Thomas, uh math is here. Our students with disability um um leader, um leader is on as well, Ms. Walker. Additional, we have some um additional instructional support teachers that's on this call today. Um that's Ms. um Ross, uh Ms. Grayson, and our E S L um representative, Ms. Oliver, and then our science um content lead, Ms. Mascolo, that's on this call as well. And again, our other teachers are a part of this call um as well. So again, whole group uh synchronous, you know, that's live, and that's where teachers are teaching, you know, from their screen. They're still doing everything as they do now. Mostly, all lessons right now starts off whole group, right? Nothing will change, it still will be delivered on the team's platform. Our teacher will still continue to do small group synchronous. You know, when they break out into those breakout rooms or those channels, and they will still do, and right now, group A is right here, group B is there. The the leaders uh will still do this, that will still happen even if the students are here physically in uh the building. Uh so again, that will still happen here at the school. So again, even in pre-K, whole group, teachers have removed all large carpets. We're uh they're divided still in those groups. Um teachers will utilize um outdoor courtyard areas for whole group experience when available. Um teachers will still mark social distancing seating areas. They will still do uh the story time. Students will be spaced throughout the room to listen or continue with group A, group B format. Again, centers uh will be designed and established rules to accommodate no more than two students at a time. Directional markings will be placed on the floor and walls to outline the traffic flow, and then students will alternate in groups of ten uh a- and centers. The remaining group of ten will be divided to small uh groups. So that will continue specific to pre-K. Asynchronous, meaning that they're learning on their own, right? We've been fortunate to have three asynchronous Wednesdays uh for missed assignments. So the asynchronous time looks a little bit different. This week, it was mostly asynchronous work over skills that's been covered before um to where they ga- uh give the old, the assignments for the day. But we do know that we have asynchronous time that's um set aside, you know, every day. Uh and the new schedules that your teachers will give you will designate, I believe, three forty-five to four fifteen will be asynchronous learning. You know, time to where uh they will have that work that they could do, and that's really helping us with the transition of in-person cuz we got a lot of stuff that's gonna be happening in the building, trying to make sure that those, the students that's leaving here, they're getting in their cars, getting to their areas safely, you know, as well. So again, um asynchronous um work here, we're gonna post this video um as well. Um I know some people look at this and say, is that one of our teachers here at the school? Uh no, that's at one of our capital, at Capital Elementary School in another uh state. So we will actually put this on um as well um on our social media platform. It's about an eight-minute video that shows, hey, what hybrid synchronous learning um looks like. So uh I'm going to go ahead and go to the next one. So again, classroom monitors and subs. So we know um at um Dexter um Elementary, we we have subs and we have assistance to support the work. So we will have school-wide support with monitoring and supervising students during our school opening, throughout the school day, during dismissal. Assisting with taking attendance, helping students and troubleshoot issues with devices. So we know that um throughout this year, we have had subs available in our classrooms. Um that became a part teaching class with guest teachers for the entire first semester and things of that nature. That will continue uh with our substitute teachers that goes through that same uh protocol, health screenings and everything. And they're employed with Shelby uh County Schools. So again, our daily schedule scenarios in person. This just shows a sample, a day in the life of a student during COVID. Um Angela travels to school between eight fifteen to eight thirty. Um if they're on a bus, they enter the building at eight thirty to eight fifty-five, gets the temperature check and everything. These are just samples of what happens when the student gets to the school. So again, really look at between eight thirty and eight fifty-five. At at nine o'clock to twelve o'clock, Angela washes her hands before entering the room and what goes on throughout that day. They eat lunch at a certain time, and then at three fifty, Angela prepares to go home and exits, you know, the building. This um you've probably seen this on our digital platforms, this will be available to you just to see these samples, what we're doing as they enter the building. You know, as well. Uh y'all know I'm in the building and in in the building, the air and stuff is centrally um. Uh on and all that stuff, and I can tell you that everything is off, you know, right now, so it's it's getting hot in the building. So you know I'm gonna go through and uh click pretty fast the rest of these slides. But again, it gives you uh the day in the life of elementary school students working virtually during COVID nineteen, and you've seen this, this is available on our SES. Website, you know, as well, just gives a sample in the day in the life of a child, but our teachers have worked diligently. They've worked hard to where you will actually get these ske- your schedules for your child um in the next day or so. So again, it talks about students that's working virtually. That will continue. The only thing that will change is the time, we're shifting from eight to nine o'clock. Um school-wide. So again, um SEL supports, we do have those supports and you all, um thank you to the parents that reach out to their child. Uh to their teacher, their child's teacher, and let us know that things are happening. Once we find out that things are happening, our team, um our counselors are reaching out, our social workers are reaching out to provide assistance. Um we have been fortunate to where they have made home, you know, visits, made phone calls, um called, we supported the best way that we can throughout. You know, this time, because we know that some students, they are, you know, they're going, this is a pandemic, this is trauma for them throughout this time. We want to best support them the best way that we can, but we don't, we, we can't provide that support if we don't know. So again, connect with your child's teacher, reach out to our uh counselors um as well, so that they can provide those. Uh supports. So again, uh pre K, early childhood. Just the parent drop-off, we talked about the parent drop-off and pickup, there's just some re- um some re-things that we've discussed already. Um also with cleaning and sanitizing, we've covered um that part as well, pre K in-person learning, we talked about that whole group. Uh all carpet, you know, been removed, those big carpet times that they usually do on the carpet, that's been moved, the centers. Uh will be um available to accommodate no more than two students, you know, at, at a time. Um as we move forward, again, pre K meals will be the same, um that go, you know, of course, they can bring their own lunch. But um again, we'll have those um um grab-and-go type meals as well. So again, we talked about the enhanced cleaning um protocols and safety here at the school, that we're trying to do to ensure that the building is safe. For our scholars that's choosing in-person, but then also our staff, we want our staff um to follow those guidelines. Um throughout this time, you know, as well. So again, uh we have our protocols. So again, if your child, you know, is a close contact to someone, let us know, um call the school, email me. Uh so that we will know um and follow those safety um confirmed uh cases, you know, as well. Again, uh we will make sure our SES contact tracing um team will contact you if something breaks out. If we have to, um if a child has um COVID or COVID-like symptoms and all of those things, we will follow that protocol. Um where a child, you know, my child, my children has been going in, you know, in person. You know, throughout, you know, this, throughout this pandemic. And we get, you know, those emails or text messages saying, please check your email, and nine times out of ten, when we're doing those safe contract. Tracing, you know, things, they're not in close proximity, so school still, you know, continues on, you know, on that, on that end. So it is protocol and procedures that we follow in case of that as well. So an updated student learning options for return to in-person learning, you can visit the school to change and update your child's learning option. And staff will be available to assist you. You can call the school. I know if you've been trying to call the school, our buildings are closed. Um actually, I know that our parents may not um realize that, that our building has been closed. Since the snow and everything, and then this week, it's been closed Monday, Tuesday, it's actually closed tomorrow um as well. So again, you can call the seed office, but you can also continue to reach out to your child's teacher to change those options. Um again, this is um the form that you fill out, and um we are going to probably start it tomorrow. If you have emailed me um um saying that I'll choose to do this, I'll choose to do that, we have captured that data. And we've sent it in, so uh I will go back through to those hundred-something emails that we've received. To just reply and say, received, um selection choices received, so that you know that we have received um those. Those emails. So again, um this is what we're verifying credentials prior to releasing any information to parent. Uh in Power School contact pages and and everything, and we know that that's one of the ways that we wanted our. To be safe, and that's for our teachers to reach out to you to get that information. So again, you can't update it in um Power School, we have to at at the school. Um change it in the system uh for you. So again, thank you for uh reaching out to um the children. So again, just so you all know, our superintendent, he says this every day, that the coronavirus will not defeat feed us. We are nine oh one. We think about Memphis has seen a share of epidemic uh um and pandemics. Um the, the, you know, eighteen seventy-three, eighteen seventy-eight, then nineteen eighteen, you know, so we actually went through these and. We conquered it, and we know that we are going to, um we have seen um Memphis at its worst. But we've survived, not only survived, but we've thrived, and we know that we're going to do this as well throughout this pandemic. Um I know that you, um our staff members, um I speak for myself and everything, have been affected, you know. Um either uh personally or, you know, through our uh family members or um. Um I could say with our staff and students, you know, that's, that's saying that, hey, we've been connected and we know how serious this. This virus, you know, and everything um else, you know, is, if you have not been impacted by it. Good, you know, continue to thank, thank uh them that you have not, but we know that, you know, lives have been lost and our. Students and our staff members have been impacted, you know, adversely, you know, for this. So again, we talked about our safe, safe room protocols, again, our safe room is close to one of our restrooms and close to the area. So if we call you parents, um if students develop symptoms or they have a fever, your pickup would not be the front office. Your pickup would be in the back of the school, uh because we are making sure that that room that our students are in, it's in that safe room where. Um staff will be in to monitor them until you get here to pick them up. So again, uh we will follow those procedures, they have a restroom, and then if we have that, we shut down that restroom, disinfect that restroom. And safe room after uh every, you know, visit, you know, and everything. So say for instance, two people come with a fever, those two people will come to that safe room socially distanced, you know, in that room. Um until the, until you're picked up, and then that restroom that they have u- they used will um be closed down. Staff, uh Scott, well, staff don't use that restroom anyway, but scholars will not be allowed to that restroom, because we have to go through that full. Um cleanliness of that room before we open it up again uh for um our staff, um for our students. To resume those um areas. So again, exceptional children and health services re-entry plan. We're going to do the best that we can, uh as continue with virtual IEP support. Um you may ask how we'll um spare services and um for those students that choose in-person. One of those things that's gonna happen with in-person for ESL services and then also with um speech is that those teachers will actually go to the room. To pick up this kid socially distanced and escort them to their rooms for those services. So um again, um they will be moving about the building, going to another classroom to have those services done. Because when you think about it, inside of a classroom, it's different if you, if you are in person and you have on headphones and then. If I'm teaching with headphones and then you're trying to listen to me, I'm in another classroom, but in one classroom, it's not going to be um. You know, it's gonna cause a distraction for our scholars. So again, that will happen and we asking um i- if your children gets. Um instructional resource support, that you be um patient with us, because we know that this is gonna look different come next week, based on the numbers. That's why we're still trying to get those numbers and knowing who's coming, because that's gonna look different as well, uh as we try to schedule those times. Um virtual is easy, because you can pick up, I'm in a classroom, but the thing is, making sure that we still. Um accommodate the students according to their IEPs, that first week is gonna look d- different, because we're trying to reschedule. Um everything and try to come up with our schedule, how we're gonna plan this out to make sure that we're still socially distanced. Our students, but then again, that we're still giving them that information that they, you know, deserve. So um we will continue with virtual IEP meetings, we will not have IEP meetings um in the building. Uh so we'll continue with the DocuSign and all of those things will be the same. So um the frequently asked questions, you know, that is still um there. You know, return to school documentation for positive and close contacts, will students need a clearance letter to return? Any student who tested positive would need a clearance letter from the student's doctor or one of the SES school-based health um centers. So again, um you will get that link, close contacts do not need any um documentation when they return. Students do not need a negative test result to return to school, and clarification, any student who cannot return to school for a period of time. Uh required will be expected to attend class virtually. This student will be coded CBD. Um uh and if the student is too sick to attend virtually, the student will be coded CBA, that's in-house. So we'll know that they're sick extended time, but they won't be held against them, and then if it's uh to the point to where they can't come back. We will um talk to the seed office to see if we need to potentially set up student for homebound um services. So COVID nineteen positive, um if uh what is considered a valid clearance documentation, return to school building. A clearance letter from the child's doctor or our uh school uh-based health uh centers will be considered a valid clearance form. So um close contact, what constitutes a close contact based on a district protocol? A close contact per health department is within si- six feet fifteen minutes or longer. However, the district tracing team will determine those con- who those contacts are, and then make that known uh from, from there. So say for instance, like for my children, my person, my personal, my blood children. Um it's been, it's been, don't let the news fool you, there have been COVID cases in municipalities, okay? So again, once that's happened, we get a little text, you know, message from the school saying, please check your email for important email. And it may say that um a positive COVID case was um, you know, detected and determined in a classroom. It was determined uh that your child was not in close proximity of the child, and they can continue with school as normal. You know, but if it's different, your email will look a little bit differently. Will we notify the entire school? If it just, if it was a isolated thing, that it happened in one classroom on the red hallway, and they didn't come in, come in. Close contact with anybody else, the whole school would not be notified that, hey, it was a COVID case, you know, today or a close contact case. But um again, the district will tell us when that happens. So are close contacts not required to be tested? That is correct. Close contacts are not required to be um testing, and you see the other, you know, info co- um information that's on that time. So what determines the length of quarantine? We're still going with ten days from the last contact with the person who tested positive. Will they be required to get tested? No, they are not um to get, you know, tested. So what is documentation that will indicate they are safe to be at school? Close contacts do not need to be um um tested. So again, systematic um symptomatic students flu-like, when are students put in the safe room? You have that information, you know, as well. So staff members who are close contacts of employee comes in contact with a student. Who we suspect as being positive, do they quarantine? Again, that will happen, if that happens, you know, we do have staff members that can continue on with learning. And um staff members have continued in those contacts at um that's been virtual. They, some of our staff members have been close contacts of, of other members that may have been um contacted with COVID and so forth. And they continue with learning as normal, you know, in the virtual, you know, platform and setting. So again, if student informs us that they are positive, do we notify the classroom monitor? District tracing team will notify any employees and the principal will notify any students, should they be uh if they have COVID nineteen. So uh if those things happen, we do have strict protocol and guidelines, you will be notified. You know, if that should happens and your child is um a close contact in, in that uh case. So many parents can't remember their child selected learning option, is there a quick way to inform parents of the option? You know, remind the parents that you can visit your portal in Power School, but we have done one more, we've contacted you to try to find that out as well. So originally, a parent may have selected virtual instruction, however, they are having some major technology issues, how do we handle these situations? Students still can contact the school or the help desk for, you know, assistance. So what if the student comes to school but opted for virtual learning? Do we call parents? What if they say they meant to select in-person? So again, we know that this is gonna happen. Uh you gonna see that bus go across the window and you gonna say, Johnny, get on that bus! The bus is right there, pick him up, but you chose for them to come virtually. Parents, we, no, we can't do that. So bus, bus riders and uh in-person will receive a placard. So one of the things that they're gonna um receive on uh Monday, they will um get a lanyard. Not, this is my uh, this uh y- lanyard I use with my keys, but they will have a lanyard, and on that lanyard, they will be able to put their um. You know, their mask, their nice cloth mask will be able to be attached to their lanyard, so it's always on them. You know, so if they have to um take it off to drink their water, they can take it off, but it's not falling on the floor, it's still on their person. But also, in-person um students will receive another placard that shows that, hey, I'm in-person learning. So bus riders will see that and the bus drivers will know, okay, you're in-person. Staff will know that if you have this in-person walkers that's in-person that we have in the system, they will get. Um a placard that will go on their lanyard and they must wear that, so we'll know that, hey, they are in-person learners. Uh please note that if you make a change in the system, if you say that, hey, I'm gonna go ahead and make this change. Your change will be twenty-four hours, it's not saying that, hey, I'm virtual uh today and I'll make that change, they gonna be in-person tomorrow. We're not saying that that's gonna happen, we're giving it twenty-four hours, so if you make the change on Tuesday, we will see that child. Physically in the building, in-person on Thursday, Tuesday, yeah, I said that right, Tuesday, you make the change, they come back in the building. On Thursday, that gives us time to make sure that CDC guidelines are followed, gives the teacher an opportunity to make sure they have did the seating chart. If it's about to go over that fourteenth number, we're able to make note and change of that, you know, as well. So again, we ask your patience with that as well. Um, oh, okay, we are at the end of our uh presentation uh for today. And um at this time, I am going to um ask our um admin team. I don't know if um if we have questions that's been put in the chat um box, but I'm going to go ahead and open that up. You know, at this time, I was going to see if, if our representative from representing the office of the superintendent. Our ISA, is she here to bring greetings before we go into Q and A? If not, she may be joint, she may have joined us, but we were going through, you know, everything. Okay, all right, let's see, uh staff members told me no. So at this time, I do see a hand that is raised. I'm going to ask at this time, uh do we have, you know, any, you know, questions, you know, at this time? I'm going to, uh I know sometimes when we ask these, uh it, it goes long, but I am going to stay on until seven fifteen. I'm going to, uh I know sometimes when we ask these, uh it it goes long, but I am going to stay on until seven fifteen.
You have to have questions in the chat box, Principal Sargent.
We do have questions in the chat box, okay?
Yes, sir. Uh you have, how can parents find what times uh buses run?
You can actually log in um to our SES site um right now, um and we'll put that on our website. And you'll be able to put in your address to see what those times that the buses run. We will try to get that information out to you per the school by Friday. Uh please note that we have been working remotely, although I'm in the building right now. Our front office team, you know, with the building being closed, they can't work in the building. So again, um how early car riders uh be dropped off? Um what's the, okay, hold on, let me make sure. We will hopefully try to get that answer to you. I know if you do it online, that it should be able to tell you that that time for the buses if you go online, but we'll make sure that we put that in the chat box. Or we will make sure that we put that in a call blast that's going to go out with that information.
Next question is how many teachers are returning and how many are staying virtual?
None. All teachers are returning. All teachers will be virtual. That that um that, I think we covered that earlier. I think it was sixty teachers that's returning. Um but we will continue virtual, so nothing changes. Um parents, uh remember how we said the only thing that changes is who is monitoring the child. So again, um that's the right way of answering it, but again, that's the same thing. Um, that's the same thing of basically the location has changed. If you if you had them at home, but you chose for them to come in school, they still going to do everything that they did at home, but it's going to be in the school. They'll be in the classroom all day. Uh they'll see outside, I think I said that they'll see outside twice. They'll see outside during arrival. They'll see outside doing dismissal. They'll go to the restroom with the team uh with the teacher twice. Um and then they'll be in the classroom all the rest of the day. Um that website, I see some, the website, everything can be found at sesk twelve dot org. Go under parents, then go under transportation, and then under transportation, you should be able to see the bus um thing. So if a staff member is on, if you, thank you so much. Uh it's in the chat box. Um I was going to ask the staff member uh to put it in the uh chat box. So it is in the chat box um for transportation. Thank you so much. Next question, Ms. Hicks.
Does Y Care have drop-off and pickup procedures?
Yes, it's the same um that we've had. Um you will still check in and check out at the cafeteria door. Once you check in, they're going to make, they're going to ask you to still come in with your mask. Still make sure that you wash your um, that you hand sanitize, you know, and everything. And then they will be signing out the kids um on their um devices uh from the cafeteria. So that will still be there. Um you still have to walk your kid in just right there into the door, into the cafeteria um area because the cafeteria will be used in the morning uh for Y Care. After Y Care is um gone, um at eight fifty-five, nine o'clock after they um escort those students to class, it will be disinfected, sanitized, all of the tables, the chairs, the seating areas, that cafeteria and everything. Give a chance for everything to settle and everything before we start uh lunch with kindergarten and first grade, you know, in that, in that area. Great, great question. But more information um can be found by following uh the Y Care uh site. If a staff member can put the Y Care um information in the um chat box, that'll be great as as well.
Okay, uh those are all the questions. Uh we have a shout-out for one of our parents and we want to thank her. Thank God everyone for their support. We certainly want to thank you, uh Ms. Bell, our parent. Gave us a shout-out to Principal Sargent and the Dexter Patriots for being so detailed and organized. So we thank you for that shout-out. And I believe that's all in the um chat box. So we're ready to proceed with our hands up.
All right, that that'll be, that'll be fine. And I'm going to go, I'm going to go into that form um as well. Now it's opening up on my, on my, on the fourth computer uh to make sure that we captured all of those questions that you um asked two parents. So at this time, Ms. Uh however y'all want to um do it. Uh Ms. Hicks, if you can.
Okay, Mr. uh Guzman? Mrs. Sergio Guzman?
Yes, um I put up a a question in the in the in the message, but uh what's the earliest uh the 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 Y Care is going to receive the kids?
Six thirty, six thirty um AM uh in the morning, and then it ends at six o'clock. We're going to keep those same, those same hours. And your sta- and your staff, you you'll pro- will, your staff, we're fully staffed. Um and then it'll be the familiar faces that um you've grown to love in the past.
All right, thank you so much.
It's 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 our teachers, our our support staff.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, you're welcome.
Okay, uh Ms. Moore?
With with the water situation, if it does not get better by the time school opens, are y'all, are we still coming back or is the building going to be closed and we're going to be remaining virtual? Because all of Shelby County, like courts and everything is closed down.
Great, great question. Um as of now, we we'll have to wait and see. Um that'll be, you know, at the hands of the superintendent. Um but as of now, we're still prepared. They still wanted us to have, you know, like our meetings and prepare for March first. But I would definitely, you know, that we'll send it out on our digital platforms. We'll let you all know, you know, as well. But um I'm I'm like you, we're just preparing for March first, not knowing how it's going to be. But once we find out, we'll definitely let you all know. But but also with water, you, I did say that that water, even with the pressure and everything, when the ban is lifted, students cannot use water fountains here at this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh Ms. Jasmine Timmons?
Come off mute?
Yes, ma'am. My question was, um what is the capacity for students that would be attending before and after care for Y Care? Because I know you can't have all of the amount of students in there. So how many can be in there?
Um so they're they're going to cap it at fifty. We can um six, uh to be honest, um with with the way that our cafeteria is set up, we can put eighty students, um eighty students in their socially distance at the table space in one way. But that's the reason why we're utilizing the gym um as well as an extra, you know, space. Because I do know that they um, the way, the way I was informed, we have a Y Care walkthrough uh later this week. But I do know from talking to our director uh and also the manager, um the site manager, that they're they're able to operate a little bit the way they're they're doing now, that they will have some activities, but they will still utilize those two um spaces. So eighty, like if we had to seat everybody and they couldn't move and they just had to sit at a table, we can do eighty um students. But I think they're maxing out at fifty for Dexter Elementary School.
Okay, and another question, and then that's all. I wanted to know as far as the grade, like for example, Auburn is in third grade. How many would be returning for third grade? Or did you say that the kindergarten, the pre-K has the most amount that are returning?
Yeah, they had, they have the most um amount uh right now. I just know that from the numbers. They have the very large amount of kids returning. But the other numbers, you know, are, you know, it's not, it's not large. We 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 have enough. I think e- every class, every class is going to at least have, you know, probably about, you know, eight plus students in it.
Okay, that's not a lot.
But do know, but do know, do know, and I, that's why I had to tell my staff, like I'm very transparent with the staff. Because people can change, you know, I said, tell them that, hey, you you think you got eight, you got eight starting March first, but you never know, come March sixth, seventh, eighth, or after spring break, you may have your whole, your whole class trying to come back. Here we have to re-shift a lot of things, but we're going to be flexible, you know, in it. Some some numbers are smaller than than others. But I can tell you as of right now, and I'm being very transparent, with that fourteen number, no class has reached fourteen yet. I I I can honestly say that. All my close, but none have exceeded that fourteen number yet.
Okay, well, that that was the only question that I had as far as the board after care. And as far as how many are it going to be returning back? And I also wanted to let you know, I think, I don't know if you saw my message, but I think she'll return, well, I know she'll return to virtual. She'll still be virtual.
I think I did, I think I did get yours. You you sent me an email and a class dojo? Okay, yeah, we've been trying to go through both, both of them, you know, everything. But yeah, I'm going to go to hopefully this evening or throughout the night or in the morning. My staff tell me not to work in the wee hours of the morning because if y'all get alerts, they get alerts at one or two in the morning, ding ding, like, why is he up? But I'll, I'll try to be mindful of that, but I'm going to go in and put received, like message received or email received. So parents will know that we do have it to capture, you know, that information. But no, keep emailing me.
Because I know on the YouTube, I said, oh, he working late.
Yeah, it's it's al- it's always, but that's, we do what we can for our scholars, for our babies, for you all.
Right. Well, that was all the questions that I had, Principal Sargent, and you answered my questions. And thank you so much for being excellent, uh excellent principal.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
You. You're welcome. Ms. uh Dinma Valenzuela? Dinma Baswell, Valenzuela, are you still on?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Good evening.
Um first of all, I would like to thank, you know, Dexter elementary and everybody who works there. I know this year has been difficult, not just for the teachers, but for the students and us parents trying to help them. You truly all do an amazing job. Uh because the few times that I've been with my child, I I've been a little confused myself. Um but my question was with the children um and their notebooks. I know that you were saying that they're not going to have cubbies um that they can use. So does that mean they have to travel with all their textbooks every day? Because like my son has three math books, you know, reading books and composition books. And I'm able to help him now because I take him to a center and I can help carry his books. But is there going to be an option to leave some textbooks at the school so it will be easier to transition?
Great, great question. Um um I think we may be able to accommodate that. I do want to meet with the with with the teachers in the morning uh because some teachers have asked, you know, uh what about if we uh bring, you know, you know, how, well, I I'll be telling, telling my age and how long I've been teaching. But we used to take those milk crates and everything. Some of the teachers know I'm talking about. We used to take the milk crates and the milk crates used to be um, you know, the areas for 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 the kids. So we're looking at those because we do know with some of our kids, you do, you are right. With those workbooks and those new adoptions of things, you may have six or seven books, you know. So uh we may get to the point to where um those books may be able to be left at the school. But we do want to make sure that um they can take, yeah, because their desk, you know what, I just thought about it. That should be fine because their desk, the way the desk is, they can leave it inside of their um desk. You know, like the books and stuff inside their desk. So that that probably will not be an issue. We'll just really encourage them to make sure that they take, you know, their devices home. But we won't put their, you know, hang up their coats and stuff, you know, in the cubbies like they normally have on the hooks just because of, you know, the spreading of germs, as they say. They'll just have to keep it, keep like their backpack and everything on the back. But that's a good question. Um and and we'll make note of that and staff tomorrow. Team that's still on, make sure we cover that in the morning in the huddle.
Um I have one additional question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know you um, I know you mentioned if the child is in ES, for example, my child's in ESL. If they, their teacher will come and pick them up and they will go to a different location to learn for that portion. With with lunch, will that be the same as well? Like, will the kids still go to the cafeteria or will they eat lunch at their desks?
What, uh, all students will eat lunch at their desk except for um kindergarten and first grade right now. They will eat in the cafeteria.
Okay, will it be the same um like lunches that have been provided through Shelby County right now, like at the centers? Or is it kind of be like before how they had the cafeteria, the food that was prepared at the school?
It's it's going to be kind of like how it is at the centers. It will be some um grab and go options. I do know, I'm not sure how they eat at the center, so uh excuse me if I'm, if I, if I don't know that. But I know that some things will be grab and go. Some some days they'll have cold, you know, like cold, like deli, you know, type sandwiches and things of that nature. But then on some days, they will have a mixture of hot and cold, uh meaning, you know, like chicken nuggets or something that's easy, you know, that is not messy, you know. Because I did ask them to make sure it's a combination, you know, of 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 both that's here. So I'm not sure, is 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 that kind of how they eat at the centers?
Um they've pretty much had uh like deli sandwiches or like a ham sandwich. I have a little bit of a picky eater, so I've been packing his lunch, but I wasn't sure um if I should continue to pack his lunch, and that's why I was asking.
Right. To be honest with you, and that's that's another good, a good question. Hopefully someone can capture this one for me. Um I know in the past um that they've always had the lunch menu on our um SESK twelve um site. To bring that um question up to find out if if it's going to look different, if we're going to continue that. Because I would say this, just I know next week you may, I would say still pack, pack his lunch, you know, next week. And to where we can really see it, and I talked to the cafeteria manager to see what are those items? Because I'm I'm not sure how, I just know I told him I want a combination of both.
Okay, thank you so much, Principal Sargent.
Uh-huh, you're welcome. Who's next, Ms. Hicks?
Is it pronounced Chales? Pardon me if I'm pronouncing it incorrectly, but it's Chales, C-H-E-L-E-S-E?
It's Chalese.
Chalese, okay, I apologize for mispronouncing it.
Uh first, I was on that last, the question that you answered, Principal Al, thank you so much for the both of the lunch thing because they, my child do go to the Y Care and no, they do not get no hot lunch. Thank you for for providing some hot lunch. She come home every day complaining about a cold sandwich.
Yes.
Uh but they got to do the best they can. We do send lunches as well. That was one of my questions, but you did answer. Can we still provide to bring lunches? We have to for them.
Yes.
Uh and one of my questions that did get answered uh with the Y, I saw the location, I mean, saw the information how to uh sign up. But the question was, since I'm up under the Y Care right now with a central, as a central worker, would they still provide for the Y for them to go to the before-after care? Or you, do y'all know would that actually be able to be available? Because uh right now she go to the Y, but uh she's up on the uh essential worker care program. So it's actually they, they take care of that. So is that going to be a part for the, can they be transferred over since I'm sending her back to school?
I don't know that answer uh right away. If you could send me a email with that question, I will get it answered.
Could I answer that for you, Principal Sargent?
Yes, yes.
Uh the Y, the state of Tennessee is covering all essential workers until March thirty-first. Because I called the Y to ask them today. So until March thirtieth, thirty of thirty-first, all essential workers are covered for free. But after the end of March, they don't know yet.
Gotcha. It is, it is so good that our PT, our PTO.
PTA president.
Is on, yes.
Thank you so much. That's so, I mean, what what do I have to do about, I mean, still do, I mean, how do I have to do for to enroll her? Because it's still giving me the option to, I don't have that option on the uh, the link to do it. It's asking for the uh, it's not showing me the way to sign, because she already on there. I'm just want to know how to transfer.
Twenty-five dollars already for December when we were going to enroll at first?
I think I did.
If you already call the Y tomorrow and uh try and see if you already paid and enrolled her in December, it actually just rolled over for everybody who signed up already.
Okay, so that, um so the before-after care that was already, before this came about, if you already signed up, you um actually automatically, your child is already in, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, if you didn't ask for a refund of your twenty-five dollars in December, when they automatically. Yeah, if you didn't ask for a refund of your twenty-five dollars in December, when they automatically took it out, then you're automatically gonna be, you're automatically enrolled unless you asked for that twenty-five back, and then you'll have to pay the twenty-five to re-enroll, or rather to keep your enrollment spot. But call the Y so you don't get caught with, you know, trying to pay it and then you've already paid it.
Well, that, another thing is also, I don't know, it, I mean, if, what if I didn't pay it and I pay, just go ahead and try to hold me, I don't, I can't remember since December, we didn't have so much going on. But if I need to, um, actually go ahead and get a spot put in, would I be, I just go ahead on and I could go on my thing and see, did it show me? Because we do have a, um-
You'll get an error at like the third or fourth part going on. Excuse me. Ms. Monique, I can give you guys each other's numbers, and, uh, that way you guys can talk offline.
Okay.
Ms., uh, that way I'll- I'm just gonna say, if they get an error message, it'll usually let them know to call the Y. Uh-uh, I'm gonna make sure, I want you to be able to talk to her in depth, though, so that you guys won't be rushed. Ms., uh, Chaleese, I'm gonna get your, what's your, uh, first and last name? I'm gonna look you up on Power School so I can make sure I get your contact information, and I'm gonna make sure I give you Ms. her contact number tonight. What's your first and, give me your first and last name?
That is Chaleese, C-H-E-L-E-S-E.
Uh-huh. And your last name?
Davis.
Davis, and what's your child's name?
Zakaria Davis.
Did she go here last year?
Yes.
Okay. Is it, have, uh, the number still the same in the system?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, hold the line, don't, don't log off, okay? Don't log off, I'm gonna get your contact information, okay? Don't log off, stay on, all right? And Ms., uh, okay, yes, ma'am, ho- okay, thank you, okay. Uh, thank you, Ms. Madam, Madam President, thank you. Uh, okay, and we're, for the sake of time, if you don't mind, Principal Sargent, we're gonna go on with the next parent. And ma'am, I'm, we're gonna give you all the contact information.
Thank you much.
Uh-huh. All right, and we're gonna go on to the next parent, uh, which is, uh, Ms. Jasmine Rayner. And, and we're gonna thank our PTO president again for being so resourceful and helping our parent out. Thank you all, that was excellent information. So Ms. Jasmine Rayner, if you would go ahead and present your question to Principal Sargent, please?
All right, hey, y'all, the first thing I wanna know is, what did, um, what did y'all just say about, what did you say you were gonna look in Power School to find out as far as the Y care?
No, I, I was gonna look in Power School to find out the parents' contact information. So I wouldn't have to get her, put her phone number in front of everybody.
Okay, look at me, I'm a-
Yeah, and then I'm, I was gonna have her and the PTO president talk, uh, give them each other's phone number so that they could talk in depth, uh, about their situation.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. So my stuff is about the Y care. So I know I registered in December for Y care and I ain't asked for a refund, so are, we starting with Y care March first? Like, is it starting the first day of school?
So, so your question is, is the first day of Y care, wanna start March first?
Correct.
Principal Sargent, when is the first day of, of Y care? On mute, it is March-
March first?
Okay, it is March first.
So I know they generally drafted from accounts. I know I'm, I don't know if y'all can answer this, but I hope y'all can. But I know they generally drafted from accounts the week, the Friday before, so I'm trying to see if that's what they plan on doing this Friday so I can be prepared.
I will let you know, I was trying to call one of my contacts, uh, with the Y, but they're on another, um, conference call with Y officials, so, uh, I will, uh, let you know, Ms. Watson got her hand up, so I'm, I'm trying to see, are they, uh, is that a yes, Ms., uh, Monique?
Usually, just trying to do your twenty, whatever they need to draft, which is the twenty-five, they're gonna do it this Friday. It's always the Friday before you, you know, Y care starts. So everything is always a week ahead.
Gotcha. Thank you so much, PTO president. Hey, before we go to the next question, um, everyone, and I, and again, I'm just gonna stay on until, uh, we get the last, you know, three hands, the questions asked, and I appreciate you for being patient tonight. You know, we had over two hundred plus, uh, parents, um, on our call, but our, um, our instructional, uh, leadership director, my boss, um, is able to join in, and she's gonna bring greetings now from the office of the superintendent, Dr. Tankson.
Good evening, good evening to everyone. Thank you so much for attending the Dexter re-entry meeting this evening. I know it may have been a little long, but I know you were able to get a lot of valuable information. I bring you greetings from our superintendent, Dr. Redd, our deputy superintendent, Angela Whitelaw, our assistant superintendent, Constance Lee Jones, and all of the executive cabinet of Shelby County Schools. We welcome our students back into the building. We have been in school since August, teachers working diligently every day, and our students have too, but this is our opportunity to bring our students back into the building while they'll continue to learn in the building, but through teams. So parents, we certainly thank you for coming out this evening and just being a part, um, via teams in our meeting, and I'm hoping that you're able to get all of your questions answered, because that's what we're here for, and I certainly want to thank Mrs. Sargent and the academic, um, administrative team and all of our teachers for all of their hard work in putting this presentation together for you. Thank you for having me this evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Dr. Tankson. All right, thank you, uh, Ms. Hicks, eh, Ms. Hicks, next question?
Okay, uh, next question, uh, for Rita, if you'll proceed with your question?
Yeah, I must have missed the first part. So will there be a teacher or someone supervising the students all the time while in class to see if they are doing their work and all that?
There, there, if I'm understanding the question, um, well, understanding the correct, uh, question correctly, um, you will have the same teacher that's, um, that your child has had, you know, will be in the classroom to assist, to make sure that, um, learning is taking place, that your child is still, you know, participating, participating and engaged, um, in the learning. Um, uh, at various times, um, you may have a second person in the room, um, to may, that's what we call our parent professionals or assistants, that may come in to assist the teacher, you know, or, uh, but you will have someone that will be in the classroom. Um, every child will have an adult supervising them, monitoring them, uh, making sure that they're doing the work and being engaged throughout that time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, um, Mr. Sergio Guzman?
Yes, uh, just one more question, and that's it. Uh, um, I know we talk about the, the Y care, the, the, the max capacity is gonna be fifty. Um, so what, what would happen if my kid is not choose to be on one of those fifty? What would happen with the rest of the kids that maybe trying to enroll for the, uh, before and after care? Uh, what is the other option their parents will have with that?
I do know that it's a po- that's a possibility that they will be put on a waitlist, and then we'll just have to get, you know, clearance, our, um, office, uh, safety and risk management team will have to come, you know, come into our building to assess um, our learning space and the spaces that we use to see if we can accommodate more. But it'll just be one of those things of putting, you know, our scholars on a waitlist and then moving from there, and you all know me, do you know that's hard for me with a cap, you know? Back in the past, I always said, I want the max, or whoever, I don't wanna turn anybody away, but, um, but that's what we'll go from there, you know, I wanna be transparent, you know, with you all, but we'll try to work it out, but it'll be under the direction of our risk management, you know, and safety team to say yay or nay, you know, we're adding more to it.
Yeah, hopefully they figure something out because, uh, all this pandemic, all this, a lot of people not working, and they just barely starting to work in, and most of the people work in the mornings. So that's pretty much, uh, uh, the issue, like, hopefully they figured something out.
Gotcha, de- definitely, definitely, and I'll keep you updated, too, but you did go ahead, you've already registered, right?
Yes, I already did, but I'm hoping that my kid, you know, goes in, but I'm, it's, it's the same question maybe for a lot of parents. They, what would happen if my kid doesn't get, you know, chosen by, uh, you know, on that capacity? What's my next move, you know, what would I do?
Gotcha. Well, Mr. Guzman, I, I, um, we, we've taken down your name and everything, and you know, definitely I will put it on social me, not social media, our Class Dojo once we get, um, you know, information, and my, my contact actually called me, that's, my phone was ringing a second ago, but that's who called me, so I definitely probably have an answer tonight that I will be able to post in Class Dojo to, um, to let you all know, especially with the question about the money, you know, thing, and then I may ask her, where are we right now? If people have already signed up, have we accepted everybody? Because I think, no, you know, if you go on that site, I know like one of our, one of our zone schools chimney rock, it said limited, um, I think, limited number or something right now, because they hit that margin almost, so if, I, I, I'll just verify, I'll just verify that, and then let you all know.
Yeah, thank you. I know it's gonna go quick, so.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next parent, uh, Mr. Antonio Smith?
Hello, and thanks for answering the question. Um, I have, I'm concerned that if my child is exceeded the cap of that classroom, will he get a new teacher or will he be in a different classroom interacting with his original teacher? And the second part of my question is, will the Thursday pickup for the food continue if I opt to keep him at home?
Gotcha. So, uh, I can answer your, your second question very quickly. Uh, if your child goes here or, or virtual, you can still pick up that meal. Okay, so that will still happen on Thursday at those designated times, uh, was it nine to twelve and one to five or something like that? That time would still be the same, and then the second, um, the first, the answer to your first question, can you, can you tell me what grade your baby is in?
He's in the third grade.
Okay, so what, what I'm trying, what I'm hoping, okay, if it's not, if it's not the self-contained class where it's one teacher teaching all the subjects, if it's, if it's in one of the other departmentalized classes, what we will do first, um, we'll try to, you know, say, say, who, who class your baby in?
Uh, Ms. Thomas and Ms. Daniels.
Okay, so that, uh, so what we would do, say Ms. Daniels' class hit that fourteen, um, mark. Remember, that's what we said, that we're going by that number, but I did say that our classrooms are a little bit larger than, um, regular, you know, schools to where if we go over that fourteen, like I'll just call, you know, my boss and the safety, um, team for them to come in. If it's like one or two over, they'll probably will say, you know, you technically can put two more students in here to safely, you know, distance, but if, if they said no, what we would do, like if Daniels' class hit that fourteen, but Ms. Thomas only had nine, what we would do is take your baby, uh, and put them in Ms. Thomas's, um, room and everything, and then they'll just, they'll still have the teacher, but they, you, you, they may be impacted because then they will have, they'll be sitting in the, in Ms., in Ms. Thomas's room and taking, you know, like math at a different time, and then, uh, Daniels at the other time.
Gotcha, gotcha. That would be fine, lo- as long as they didn't, you know, break the continuity of having the same teachers, because
Right.
not only do I enjoy them, he's getting a lot from both of them, and I'm sure all the teachers are wonderful, but those two particularly are, are working out great for me and my child.
Gotcha, and we're hope, we're hoping to keep it, you know, that, you know, that way, you know, the best, the best that we can, so that's a, that's a great question, great question.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Um, we have Cameron, uh, uh, Gardner. Carmen Gardner.
Hi, I was wondering, I was wondering, um, where do we find the progress notes? Uh, because we didn't receive one for this past six weeks, so where do we find those? Are they automatically emailed to us or are they in Dojo? Where do we find those?
So the pri- are you talking about the report card that was just issued?
Yes, for the report cards.
It should be, it should be in Power School. Have you been able to go inside Power School?
Yes.
Okay.
I went into Power Schools and I went under the, uh, grades and attendance, and I didn't see any progress notes there.
Can you email me? Email me, uh, child's teacher and everything, uh, and I can look, I can look into it to find out what's going, going on, you know, in the system, if it's a, um, you know, era, you know, on our end that's not allowing you to, to see it.
Absolutely, I sure will, thank you.
Okay, our apologies on that. It should have been, um, available. If you send me an email in the child's teacher, Cameron's teacher.
Okay, I'll do that tonight.
Okay, thank you. Tell, uh, Cameron hello. Whoa, Ms. Hicks, that's it?
I think that's it.
Oh!
I believe that's all.
So, so y'all that's, uh, that's just listening on, no, Ashley, who is Ashley? Ashley, you playing, or you for real? Go ahead, Ashley.
Serious. Uh, see if I can talk to the lady from, uh, the YMCA personal office. I thought they were talking about me. Do me.
So, oh, Ashley, you-
Contact information?
Uh, she wants the PTO, the PTO president?
Yes.
Oh, oh, oh.
As far as to the, uh, YMCA before and after care program.
Ms., Ms. Wa- Watson?
Ms. Watson.
Yeah, I'm here.
Ms. Watson, check your phone, your ti- your text message. Check your phone.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Do you, um, oh, okay, yeah, you can put it in the chat, that's fine, Ms. Hicks. Is that what you asked me?
Yes.
Okay, you know.
Well, Sargent, I asked her, did she want her phone number in the chat, or you want them to email you?
No, that's, that's-
She's, please, just, baby just called me, because I'm horrible with emails. You'll get a message from me by the time they end this mail.
Mm-hmm, and then you all, eh, uh, and then, um, Ms. Monique, you know that you can send me those, you know, questions, some of the questions that you made, can't answer with the Y, and I can send it directly over, uh, to one of the managers, uh, you know, of the Y.
Yeah, it ain't no problem, because I, me and the Y are good friends, because I can't, look, I, they know me like they know, look, like you know me over there. They know me over there.
Hey.
We have become close friends, but yes, sir, I will.
Hey, the people that's on the phone, uh, e- everybody else, let me, let me go ahead and officially, um, end our time together today. Thank you all so much. I do have, uh, my contact with the Y um, on speaker right now. She said that she's a- at a capacity where she can answer a few questions. Uh, so, um, if you wanna stay on, that is fine, uh, but after she finishes and everything, I will end this meeting because this not, I want y'all to see my screen back here is not a background, you know, some teachers and people have the background. I'm actually physically in the building, so, uh, so I can get, so I can get home and eat, you know, so, but, uh, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead at this time, it was a question, uh, if we wanna ask those questions again, what, what was one of those questions, and I believe, um, I won't say your name.
Chaleese, is Ms. Chaleese still on here? Ms. Chaleese?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Ms. Chaleese, had a question about a central worker.
Yes, my, I got two now, because I saw something else on there. And my question was about the central worker, would I still be transferred over since my child go to the Y already? Um, would that be transferred over, and also, what can be done since now I see that the capacity have shoot them for the before and after care? You don't have an option for that right now in the school.
Right, correct, all right. So, uh, to answer the first question, no, you will have to do a new registration because essentially they are two different programs. Uh, Virtual Learning Academy is different, can they hear me?
Can y'all hear, huh?
I hear, I hear.
Okay, yes, they can hear you.
Uh, virtual learning is different from before and after care. Uh, but let me pause a second. I didn't introduce myself. My name is Mary Oles. I'm from the YMCA of Mississippi, Mississippi South, uh, and I'm glad to help answer any of your questions. Okay, so, uh, so you will need to re-enroll or register, uh, still through SmartCare. So that just means that, uh, SmartCare is the app that we use for checking in and check out, it's a virtual learning. And so you would, um, your login for that, um, like on your phone or, uh, on your computer would be the same, and you would just select Dexter Elementary as the- And you would just select Dexter Elementary as the, as the site. So you would go to the website and register under before and after care. And then, they're talking about the essential work.
Yes, there was a question about the essential worker with the twenty-five dol- Ms. Chalise, can you uh, ask, ask that second part?
Well, yeah, I do, I, I know Ms. Monique was saying something about you paid the twenty, the twenty-five dollars uh, withdrawal out of our account in December. We actually already automatically in, that's something that have, I, myself, I don't remember. Was it taken out or whatever? But um, I also was uh, on the link just a second ago as well, where they put in, in the group chat. Um, to be able to see about registration, it's showing me my essential worker uh, information. But also, when you go to for Dexter, it gives you the option that they still have many slots for the before care. And they have slots there for the after care, but they don't have slots available no more for the before and after, that's why, that's where my problem gonna come in at.
Okay, so you're saying on registration, it doesn't have. Let me see, I'm gonna check really quick where you guys are on your uh, enrollment. Because, you know, in the past, the YMCA, we have not done caps, it's actually something that's making like a lot of us trans right now. But because of where we are now with COVID, we're having to administer caps on the program. Um, and that's just so we can maintain social distancing properly, you know, in the school. And so, I'm gonna check to see now if uh, we have reached that cap, the reason, um. It won't allow entry, and I, what I may have to do is follow up with you individually.
Yeah, that would, that would be perfect, if I could get your number, I mean, cuz I, I do want, I have to go home and eat tonight, it is late. Church right now, and I told him I can't get on, I gotta get my baby situated. But if possible, yeah, I can get your number to, to reach out, uh, we could talk later, I mean, tomorrow, uh, after we get off this call. I just need to know where she needs to stay, because I did ask the center where she actually go right now. With, I know that center gonna still be available, but I did want her to go to the school, but if. We don't have a before, we don't have a before and after care for ourselves, as a central worker parents, I'm gonna have to find another option, that's, that's, that's what I'm trying to look for right now.
Yeah, so my email address and, and Patrick, I, I'm assuming y'all are on Teams or something?
Yes, we, 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 we're on Teams, Mary, and I, and look, my apologies for not uh, introducing you, I didn't know if you wanted to be um, talking in that capacity. If you were, if you were, if you were Mary, the manager, or Mary, uh, my sister. Right, alright, my friend, yeah.
My email address is mary, M-A-R-Y.
Uh-huh.
Dot O, O-L-D as in dog, S. At YMCA Memphis. Dot org. And the reason I'm giving you my email address, because uh, it's probably, well, I know it is, it's some people very quick to navigate you through this. Uh, cuz I'm more so on relationship management side of uh, Y care and the relationships that we have with the school. So when you send me that email, I can easily forward that and tag in the correct person that can uh, get you the help that you need.
Okay.
Did we put it in the chat, did we put it in the chat box?
I could put it in chat box.
Okay, alright.
So mary dot O at YMCA Memphis dot org.
Okay, it is.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
How, what is the earliest time that a car rider can be dropped off? And are the students allowed to have their own little um, Ziploc bag of hand sanitizer and stuff like that in their backpacks?
So, um, I'm gonna defer to Principal Sargent about um, the small items, but as far as. Y care, uh, they can bring those personal items with them. When they enter the program space, uh, they will wash and sanitize their hands. And then put their belongings um, spaced out um, in the program space. So they will necessarily carry, um, I guess like those items around with them throughout the program time. But it will be accessible um, to them. And so, and then drop off, uh. The program begins at six thirty, and so, um. You'll be able to drop off, uh, beginning at that time, they'll be allowed entry into the program. And then uh, Principal Sargent, you guys are a nine AM school.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Okay, so typically thirty minutes before school starts, that, that ends dropout for before care, is that still correct, uh, Principal Sargent?
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, so eight thirty, so your dropout time would be between six thirty AM and eight thirty AM.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any, any more questions for Mrs. Oles? With the YMCA, before I let her go? Well, y'all may, well, Ms. Ms. Oles, I, Mrs. Oles.
I have one.
Okay, hold on.
I hope y'all said it, she said that they'll, that we're paying starting Friday, right?
Oh, well, I don't think anyone asked that.
Yeah, the program starts in the morning with before care, you said about paying? Registration is open now, so. If you're looking to regi- oh, you have to wait until the payment come out, yes, it comes out on Friday.
This Friday.
On the Friday before the program starts, get there.
Alrighty, thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Ms. Rayner wanted to make sure she ready for Friday.
Gotta be ready.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, um, what, Ms. Rand, why she asked about what she asked? I know they said the twenty-five dollars that was taken out, um, already when we, in December. How will we know, how can we find out about that twenty-five dollars with, uh, was taken out?
How do you know if it was taken out? You can um, actually call um, our hotline for parents. And let them know that, hey, I'm checking on the status of my registration fee, cuz that's what that twenty-five dollars was, registration fee. And then they can quickly look up your name and, and look to see if that uh, came out. And if it did, then it'll be applied to your registration, I mean, to your uh, program.
Okay, is, is possible, can you give me the, um, where all of us, that number?
Yes, it is nine oh one. Seven six six. Seven six seven seven.
Okay, I, I, okay, that's the number that I call on, okay, thank you, I, I'm making sure that was the right number. But I will send you an email on my behalf, um, and thank y'all so much for all the questions being answered. We're gonna get through this, Dexter will make it.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
Ms. Oles, I appreciate it so much, and uh, check your email, cuz, cuz the Dexter, the Dexter family, they, they finished, they, you gave it to them, they finna email you now. Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Alright. Alright, is there any other, I see two hands, maybe those hands was for her, but we good? We good, everybody good?
I don't see anymore, I believe this, let me see if I see any more hands. I believe that's it.
That, that is it?
I believe that's all.
Well, y'all, thank y'all, thank y'all so much. If y'all need us, seriously, um, you know how to reach us, um, send us, any of us an email. Um, again, um, we, the building is closed, um, tomorrow, you know, and everything. Whatever we can do to assist you, send us an email and we'll try to navigate, navigate it through um, email. So I hope that you all have a great um, night, if you think of any additional questions. Uh, feel free to email the team and we'll try to answer those. Again, thank you for entrusting um, your children to us each and every day, we do not take it um, for granted. You all be blessed and have a good evening.